Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The time is 7:02. This meeting of the Eastline Planning Commission is now in session. We have one empty seat this evening. I'd like to invite our alternate, Kirk Scott, to join our commission. And please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
By way of introduction, our commission members this evening are Peter Lynch, Kirk Scott, Rita Palazzo. My name's Brian Shook. To my left is Joan Bankston and Brenda Henderson. First item of business this evening is a public hearing. Application of Eastline Planning Commission. Application of the Eastline Planning Commission to amend the Eastline subdivision regulations, section nine. Assurances for completion and maintenance of improvements. Is anyone from the public here to discuss the application? Mr. O'Connell?
For the record, I'm Attorney Edward O'Connell, and perhaps we should build a little bit of a record for the public hearing. As the commission knows from prior presentations, not exactly on this, but prior experiences, in 2011 and 2012, the Connecticut State Legislature substantially amended the statutes, the enabling statutes regarding the posting of subdivision bonds by planning commissions. And those statutes have been before you several other times in the past. The commission undertook to update its regulations and enforce that statute. We took our time about it because there has not been, for quite a while, any subdivisions which require that. And we formed a subsection, subcommittee, and several members of the present commission are on that committee. The statute is eight dash twenty-five, sub D, section one, or I'm just going to read the first paragraph, so. And it says, "To satisfy any financial guarantee requirement, the commission may accept surety bonds and shall accept cash bonds, passbook, or statement savings accounts, and other financial guarantees other than surety bonds, including but not limited to letters of credit, provided such financial guarantee is in a form acceptable to the commission and to the financial institution which issues a letter of credit. The financial guarantee may, at the discretion of the person posting the financial guarantee, be posted at any time before all approved public improvements and utilities are completed, with the exception that the commission may require a financial guarantee for erosion and sedimentation controls prior to the commencement of any improvements." And the statute goes on, but that was the big shift in public improvement laws, where the commission could no longer totally impose the type of bond that we accept. Some of these provisions are at the option of the developer rather than the commission. But the statute also provides a great deal of detail, which I'm now going to ask my partner, Catherine Marriott, who's spent a lot of time on this, to come forward and go through it in such detail as the commission might want to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, Catherine.
So, the major categories of change that the two, the 2011 and 2012 amendments to eight dash twenty-five, as Attorney O'Connell just read, the changes include, changes to the types of financial guarantee that the towns may and must accept. Impose a one-year from date of completion limit on financial guarantees for improvements, and the amount of those is limited to the actual cost for completing site improvements or erosion and sediment control plus 10 percent. There is a process now for, that will require, under certain circumstances, the release of all or portions of the financial guarantees. The transfer of lots to buyers before the financial guarantee is posted is prohibited. Towns, the new law now prohibits towns or anyone except by contract from requiring homeowner associations to maintain public improvements. But that does not, there was a lot of back and forth between the 2011 and 2012 amendments. It doesn't prohibit, it's limited to just public improvements, not project improvements. And lastly, it clarifies that financial guarantees under the statute are not applicable to private property. There seems to still be some confusion as to whether certain improvements, retention basins, things like that, will be public or private, but the statute is now clear that financial guarantees are not applicable to private property. The Office of Legislative Research also recommended that a global change to the regulation, change bonds to financial guarantee, because there are different types of guarantee that are now involved. And we provided-
Those are all set forth in the proposed section nine.
Those are all set forth in the new proposed section nine, that everyone should have. And we previously had provided some examples of financial guarantees. I think they were part of the minutes of the February meeting here. And we can provide, if additional examples are needed, we can provide those. Those are the parts of the regulations, though.
So, the section nine, which is before you, basically incorporates the new statutory provisions. And we thought it was a good time to do this when we did not have any subdivisions pending, so that any new subdivisions that come before you would clearly be subject to this new set of bonding requirements or financial guarantee requirements. And I think we've gone over these several times, and I really want to practice patience of the commission by going over it again, line by line, in great detail.
Thank you. Commission members, do you have any questions or comments?
Aye, Dan. Does this sufficiently protect the town, I mean, from litigation, you know, related to loans that may have gone bad, or, you know, some business deal that went bad?
Here's what it's intended to do, and that's a very good question. These bonds are intended to protect the public improvements which are required when someone subdivides the land, in accordance with the rules and regulations of the planning commission. The public improvements are the streets, the roads, the streetlights, the curbs, the drainage, the landmark, the property markers, all the things that pertain to public necessities and public requirements that are set forth in the regulations, so that when a lot owner does purchase, say, a developer does post the financial guarantee, that's why you have your town engineer make sure that he recommends, or she recommends, a financial guarantee in an amount sufficient to protect the town if the developer does go belly up halfway through the project. So that if the town is required to finish the road, for example, or finish putting in the public drainage, there will be a sufficient amount of money available to protect the town in its endeavor to fix that. That's exactly the point of it. And your town engineer is very important, because your town engineer will calculate the amount necessary to protect the town against all of those possible occasions. And that's what the bond is for, the financial guarantee.
With respect to rain gardens on, in subdivisions that are on private property, where is that right now?
Right now, that's not, the planning, my advice, that the planning commission cannot regulate activities that go on on public property. The town has to make a choice, whether it wants to maintain the rain garden as a public improvement, or whether it would be relying upon the developer and the developer's successors to maintain that rain garden, especially if it's on a dwelling lot. All of a sudden, you impose that on the owner of the dwelling lot. Well, if everybody agrees, and we've had occasions like that in the past, where the developer has agreed by voluntarily to put documents on the land records protecting that, but the commission can no longer impose that on a lot owner, or require that a homeowner association be formed in order to do that. So, the concept of rain gardens and those types of things is a wonderful concept, but there's a large gap between the concept and implementing that idea, which I know that at the state level, they're trying to work on also. The state DEEP is trying to figure that out also.
Right. My understanding of the rain gardens is, for them to function properly, they have to be maintained, and it's the maintenance aspect of the commitment that is so hard to enforce or monitor. But as we, in the present, it's going to be the private homeowners.
Yeah. When you think of it this way, you, as a planning commission, once you approve a subdivision, and once Gary tells you, and the town engineer tells you, that all the improvements have been constructed in accordance with the town's regulations and standards, and you approve the subdivision, and the subdivision is completed, you're involved when that subdivision ends. It's somebody else's job after that. That's basically it.
Thank you.
I have a question. Since we're supposedly important to water and the conservation of water in this town, can we impose on subdivisions gravel driveways, gravel streets, which are better for water flow, et cetera, et cetera? Do we have that possibility?
Streets, I don't know. You'd have to be talking to the director of public works. I don't know if the director of public works would want to accept a street that's a gravel street.
Right.
You do have regulations, which you can amend over time, and if you want to try to think about that, but you'll have to have a public hearing before you amend those.
Right.
Driveways are a different thing than the streets. That gets to that whole point about where your jurisdiction ends.
Right.
But, so I don't know if you can impose a gravel driveway, but you'd have to think long and hard before you start doing gravel streets. I think Gary would be the one to talk about that.
You don't want gravel streets.
Well, it's better for water. Just to kind of, sorry.
Okay. Well, we can certainly have the conversation with our town engineer and look at how that works, maybe in another forum. I don't know if you have any other questions for counsel?
Well, thanks so much. Or do you have a question?
I was just, sorry. I was just going to ask if there's any way to control what kind of financing that are, or somehow put in the wording that said, you know, acceptable to the board or the town as far as the financing, like what kind of financing, what's to say some company doesn't go find a shady bank in Cayman Islands to underwrite their thing? You know, like requirements from the lenders?
Well, as far as the financial guarantee is concerned, for example, a letter of credit or a surety bond that's posted by somebody else, those entities have to be acceptable to the commission.
Okay. Is that written clearly into, I mean, I saw one part where the wording was strong, and then I saw another part that it was a little-
Yeah, as a matter of fact, in the header that I mentioned, it says, "Provided such guarantee is in a form acceptable to the commission," so right away you have that.
Okay.
And the financial institution or other entity listing any letter of credit is acceptable to the commission.
Okay.
So, Gary makes very sure that only Class A insurance companies become the surety, and that the banks, we have passbooks, and we have a whole system administratively to make sure that that money stays where it's supposed to be and can't be used for any other purpose than the guarantee.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Once again, if anyone from the public here that would like to comment on the, in our public hearing, going twice. Very well, could I get a motion?
Just, for the record, exhibit items. A was your application for the text amendment. Exhibit B is the actual proposed text. Exhibit C is a copy of the legal notice, which ran in the February 18th and 2016 additions of the day newspaper. We have exhibit D, a memo to Leslie Blaze, the Eastline Town Clerk from V. Shook Chairman, dated 2/9/2016, requesting a copy of the application be put on file and made available for public inspection. And exhibit E is a memo to the Eastline Planning Commission from myself, dated March 1, regarding the proposed text amendment to section nine.
Thank you, Mr. Geisell. So I think we've satisfied our obligation to build a record. Seeing as no further comments, I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing. Second?
Further discussion? Comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing's closed. This brings us into our regular meeting. First item of business is the public delegations. Public delegation is a time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission about certain matters, issues or concerns related to approved subdivisions under construction, and in-house proposals or general topics of discussion are open to comment. Items, referrals, or applications subject to a decision by the commission, a public hearing, or litigation may not be discussed. The members of the commission will not directly answer questions or make comment during delegations. Anyone from the public here this evening? Please state your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and other board members of the planning department. My name is John Byallons Jr. of 61 Wallnehill Road. Since I'm not able to say my remarks about center plan at wetlands meeting, I'm here. I also have been to the Slickman's meeting, the Slickman's office, where Mr. Nickerson said, "I have a $400,000 attorney budget because of my potential lawsuit with the town." I'm not going to read the rest of this paragraph. You can read it when I give you the information and everything else. I don't know how many planning members here tonight were involved with the signing council and center plan during the beginning process for the solar farm. The reason I'm here tonight is that, as acting parties and interveners, Paul Famica and Gary Gosho, that was signing the paperwork that was given to the signing council as director of planning for the town of Eastline, were working more for center plan than the town's responsibility to taxpayers' concerns, to the abutted landowner's concerns, and all the items that were overlooked during construction, and all the damage to wetlands and water causes on the solar farm's property and abutted landowner's properties. Famica got what he wanted, and Gary Gosho was told by Famica to look the other way and also be on center plan's side. Sounds like the Roman Empire, it will start crumbling down at any time. I know the planning commission can't be helpful now about the solar farm and the damages they did when they altered their property so much and caused damage. I would like to warn the planning commission about the posed developments by center plan that I heard a while back in this town, by center plan, if they're going to even work in this town again. How they intimidate the commissions and taxpayers, all the promises they make to get the project approved, then it's forgotten. Promises can be written down and broken also. Make a big showing with attorneys, soil scientists, and other people about their plans. All the paperwork that's associated with the project, so you don't know where to begin or start. Just look at their record with the Yard Gold Stadium in Hofford. I've heard other problems with the service stops, the service stops along Interstate 95 and 395, and this is to name a few projects that they've done. I've heard that, wow, can't get this, that they were interested in doing the bridge and road project for Costco. The town should be very careful with center plan and the projects they want to do. I hope politics this time won't be a factor with the process. I was advised by council, even an attorney firm from New Jersey, where they take wetlands damage seriously, and other Connecticut agencies, to notify all Eastline commissions that were involved with the solar farm presentations, and the mess still up there even when they say they're all done. I present to the commission tonight the agreements I was given to sign. Their attorney Ted Harris, attorney Stevens, I like them both, they have represented me before, saying I removed items which contain wording for our protection, for example, center plan supply and liability insurance. If we start from the beginning, lonely me asked for the center plan to resent us with the insurance company. Center plan thought they were just going to come on our property without even asking us. Attorney Harris and the same wetlands meeting asked our soil scientist, Don Fortunella, if he thinks John will let us on the property. It's surprising how everyone makes center plan look so wonderful, feel sorry for them, and it reminds me of my saying my grandmother said, "Beware of the fox in the hen house." P.S. Gary will say that I'm causing center plans not to finish and fix the damage to our tributaries, other taxpayers, wetland damage, for not signing the agreement, would you? The way it was presented to me, even my insurance agent said, "What's this extra language in here for?" I have, when I was in business, given, I have given a lot of liability insurances to many people. Call your agent, and they put your name on the policy, and send it to the person that requested the liability insurance. Thank you for your time and patience, and John Byallons Jr. It's just that I'm getting to the point now that how everybody treats center plan like they're gold, and they have not done anything with our damage to our tributary and our next-door neighbor's tributary and my niece's tributary for over two years. They say a lot of stuff, and they just don't keep their promises. And I think that the town made a lot of mistakes when they did this, and I am digging more and more into it, and I'm finding a lot of things about how this went through planning, zoning wasn't involved, and how it was presented to the people of this town. And I just hope that this commission, if they have anything to say, that they would watch out for center plan like I already read to you. I have never saw a company that acts this way, and it's a shame how they, you know, they think they can get whatever they want. And, but I am not going to stop and everything, and I'm just tired of this, and I'm just going to keep coming to meetings and voice my opinions, because as a taxpayer, I have the right to do that, and if you people don't want to listen to me, I really don't care. I'm going to get something off my chest, and I'm just going to keep going. And I will give you the letters that are printed out, and the agreements that I had to sign.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Make sure Brooke gets a copy. Oh, this is all one piece?
Thank you for your comments and your documents. As a way of concluding, I would just reiterate that the members of this commission do not directly answer questions or make comments during the delegations, but thank you so much for sharing that with us. Are there any other members of the public here to speak to the planning commission this evening? Going twice? Very well. Brings us to our approval of minutes. In your packets, you can find the February 2nd, February 16th meeting minutes. Once again, if you were not present at the meeting and wish to vote to adopt the minutes, you'll need to state for the record that you have reviewed the record. Familiarize yourself with the record. I'm looking for a motion on the February 2 meeting minutes. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I heard Mr. Lynch. Any further discussion on the February 2 meeting minutes?
Do I abstain, or do I?
Were you here that night?
I was not here, and I have not reviewed this.
Okay, you can abstain. That's fine.
Mr. Chairman, I want page one.
Yeah.
Says Mr. Shook called this public hearing. I believe that was a regular meeting, correct?
Oh, good catch, Mr. Geisell. On the first page of the February 2 meeting minutes, the first line, Mr. Shook called this public hearing. Should be a regular meeting. Although, Mr. Scott, it says here that you were sat at that meeting.
Huh?
On February 2. Is that a error?
Yeah.
I was absent.
Um...
That's the special, the special-
No, February 2 was a regular, and then we had a February 16 special.
Oh, I thought this was the minutes from, I was in at the special meeting I was not at.
Very well. Then you can vote on this.
I thought so.
We have a motion and a second with the correction Mr. Geisell pointed out. Is there any further comment?
I'm abstaining as well.
You'll be abstaining?
Yeah.
Very well. All those in favor, say aye. So it would be a 5-0-1 with Henderson abstaining. Brings us to our February 16 minutes. The alternates seated that evening were Arius and Hess. This is the one, Mr. Scott, that you were not present for.
Yes.
Mrs. Henderson was also absent. If you would like to vote, please state that you've reviewed the record. If not, abstaining is okay. I'm looking for a motion approved.
Motion approved. Second?
I have a question.
Yep.
Should we not include the maps and stuff that Gary put together in the minutes that went to zoning?
Good question. Mr. Geisell, should those be included?
They were-
I mean, the full packet.
I filed them for the clerk's office.
They were included in the packet that was filed with the clerks, so they were included in that. Just trying to save some paper.
I'll be abstaining as well.
Very well. I heard the, who had the motion? Rita? And did I hear a second?
Mr. Lynch.
No, I didn't second, but I'll second it.
I thought you said-
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mrs. Henderson will be abstaining. Any further discussion or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
5-0-1, Henderson abstains. That brings us along to our next item of business. Subdivision regulation, application, Eastline Planning Commission to amend the Eastline subdivision regulations, section nine, assurances for completion and maintenance of improvements. This was the public hearing that we've just closed. It's now on our regular meeting agenda as an item. Our options are to take a motion. Am I correct?
That's correct.
We could close this matter and adopt it, and-
I can read it.
Go ahead.
Just note, I believe I put in a suggestive motion, a March 12- Just note, I believe I put in a suggested motion on March 23rd. I'm going to suggest March 24th, just based on the timing and administrative, getting the legal notices out.
So, this motion isn't-
No, the motion's fine. It's just changed March 23rd to March 24th.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. All right, and make a motion, exceeding its authority pursuant to GCGS eight dash two-